All right. So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners Board Meeting for October 17th, 2023. Can we have a roll call, please? Here.
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 He's going to turn his mic on. Here, but your mic's still not on.
Here.
Here. All right. Thank you. And we are going to be led in our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Commissioner McBernard. If you're able to, please rise.
Gracious God, I pray for our soldiers. Let Your grace be a protective shield, guarding them from harm and keeping them close to Your love and compassion. May I always remember that they are the ones who face the horrors and dangers of war firsthand. Help us honor them for their courage and care for them when there is damage to their bodies or spirit, when they are lonely and afraid, and long to be with the sure knowledge of Your presence at all times in war and peace. Let them feel, O God, deep in their hearts, that Your love is always there boundlessly, unconditionally, and eternally. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to make just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or substitutions to today's agenda?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board, yes. On page 24, 3E5 has been deleted for further staff review. Page 37, 3J2 has some correction spelling for the person's name. And on page 64, 5D1, an add-on, which is our resolution.
Thank you. I'd like to request, if no objection, that we move 5D1 in front of the first regular item agenda, 5A1.
Second.
There's no objection. Okay. With that, we'll take a motion for the amended... We have a motion by Commissioner Baxter, a second by the Vice Mayor with the amended agenda. Thank you. All right. With that, we are going to move on to consent. Would anyone like to pull any item from our consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve consent agenda.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Marino and a second by Commissioner Barnett. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, all opposed, the consent agenda is approved. Now, we'll move on to public hearings, and that will be found on page 52. First, motion to receive and file proof of publication. We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, a second by Commissioner Marino. All in favor, all opposed. That motion carries six to zero. All right. Item 4A1.
4A1 is a brownfield designation. This is your first public hearing of the required two public hearings for it. You took action to set these back in August. And so Brownfield being designated in the Ag Reserve area, actually. It's not in the Ag Reserve property at the corner of Clintmore and Lyons Road. And if you have any other questions or any details, we're available to answer them.
Are there any questions from staff? Not seeing any? Oh, go ahead.
Hi, Patrick. I have one question. Isn't it on Clintmore and 441? Are we talking about the Thomas Packing Plant?
I apologize if I misstated. Yes, Clintmore, northeast corner, Clintmore and 441, the former Thomas Packing Plant. Yes.
Thank you. Just want to make sure the record is clear.
I apologize.
That's all right.
All right. Any further questions to staff? Not seeing any. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make it.
Oh, you're going to make it? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we...
Approve on first reading.
That we approve, that we approve 4A1 with regard to the...
With regard to the designation of a brownfield area of the subject site.
Okay. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Sacks to approve on first reading and advertise for adoption hearing on November 21st, 2023, a second from Commissioner Marino. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, all opposed. That motion carries six to zero. All right. Moving on. Item 4B1, this is on the Criminal Justice Commission. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll make... I'll make a motion. We approve on preliminary reading and permission to advertise for public hearing on November 21st.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Marino, a second from Commissioner Barnett, who is our representative on the CJC. And thank you for your service, sir. Any further discussion on this item? This is adding some additional... Yes, go ahead, sir.
It looks like we're going to skip to a vote, but I just wanted to make sure Todd and Regina, everyone on staff for CJC, the Economic Council, everyone who worked to make this happen was thanked personally by me and knows how grateful I am that this has happened. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, all opposed. That motion carries six to zero. All right. Now, moving on to our regular agenda. And we're going to pick up item 5D1 first. Mr. Bonlaren, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Madam Administrator, County Attorney. Before you, we have a resolution that we worked on this past week. And due to the incredibly unfortunate circumstances that we see ourselves in the state of Israel right now, specifically related to the October 7th, 2023 attacks by Hamas and the southern region of the state of Israel and throughout other areas of central Israel. This resolution is one that we worked very closely in conjunction with the mayor in putting together, with the Vice Mayor, with other members of the board. I know that all of you have been active in the community in conversations that you've been having privately, publicly, about what we're going to embark on today, which is a very strong statement in support of solidarity with Israel, of condemning the attacks by Hamas on October the 7th, and in expressing the deepest condolences for those who are families of, who have lost lives in this incident to date, as well as those who have been severely impacted and affected by this. Throughout the resolution, you'll see how closely this holds home here to Palm Beach County. The United States is the largest Jewish population outside of the state of Israel. Florida, and particularly Palm Beach County, is one of the largest populations in the United States of America. We are a community that takes pride in the diversity of race, religion, creed, nationality, cultures coming together and living harmoniously. And we hope that that can be a model for the world. And you, Mayor, and others on this board have taken some incredible measures over the last year to combat antisemitism, both here in our community, as well as strong efforts in the state of Florida, working in concert with the legislature to do the same. So that is the resolution that is before you today. And I know that we have a number of individuals in the audience who are here in support of you in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Are there any questions of staff at this time? I'm not seeing any. So we'll go ahead and we'll move to public comment. But before we start that, I'd like to recognize Colonel Araho, who is here on behalf of the Palm Beach County Sheriff, Rick Bradshaw. And I know he has some, he'd like to share with us what PBSO is doing, not in detail, but in helping to keep us safe, as they always do each and every day.
Good morning, Mayor, Commission. Sheriff couldn't be here today. As you can imagine, he's very busy with our current tempo and what's going on around the world. But having said that, we too offer our condolences to everyone that suffered loss during this tragic situation that we're facing, not only here in Palm Beach County, but as a world. And it's heartfelt. What I can share, you know, we never speak to tactics or methods or what we do. What I can tell you is this, your sheriff's office in concert with our municipal partners, area law enforcement, regional, federal, and I must say, as you know, that Sheriff Rick Bradshaw is the chair for the regional homeland security for southeast Florida. That's a big job, and we're very fortunate to have him there. I can tell you this, the sheriff's office is well-prepared, resourced, trained to handle any natural or man-made disaster that we might face. How does that happen? That happens thankfully and thanking the Commission and Administrator Baker for properly funding us. You know, the average citizen has two police encounters in a lifetime. They expect timely, credible, professional, value-driven service. We have to be ready all the time. We don't get a second swing at it. And I can tell you that, again, by the work of many, not only at our agency, but regionally and all our partners, the funding we get, our citizens, we are well-prepared to handle anything that might come down the pike. I want to remind citizens, it's not a time to be alarmed. We are very well-informed. We have direct links to intelligence, not only from Washington, but in New York. We invest heavily in that. So there's not a delay. Those of you that are in public safety or been involved in government know that comms, communications are critical. It cuts through the fog of a situation. It cuts through the rumors and the realities that we face. We want to deal with what we have. If something's actionable, we react to it. I can't tell you what you've heard in the national media. There's nothing actionable to react to. However, we're well-prepared. What did we do? What you saw, especially in these communities that we direct service? As soon as we got the information, which was immediately, we went ahead and increased our posture, our footprint, because there's a lot of anxiety in all communities. And we increased that footprint, not only at our Jewish facilities, but at all Jewish facilities. I can tell you that our relationships with all communities, all communities, is solid because in moments like this is when it really counts, right? And again, not only the relations we have with the community, with other government entities, other bodies, everybody working to the same cause, and that is to keep our community safe. So again, I want to thank the police chiefs in this county, regionally, other law enforcement. And I can tell you what you already know. We're led by a very calm, very steadfast leader in Rick Bradshaw. We've prepared for any contingency. We don't want to sound an alarm. There's no reason to be alarmed. But again, we have an app. Call your local police department. If you see something, say something. It might not be anything. Let us decide. Don't put yourself in harm's way. That's what you pay us for. But again, we're prepared. And again, I want to thank you again for the funding that you provide us. You're seeing it at work today, and I hope we don't need it any more than just our being present. So with that, if you have any questions, be more than happy to answer.
Any questions for the Colonel? Okay. Thank you so much for being here. Thank Sheriff Bradshaw on our behalf as well.
I will. Thank you very much.
All right. We'll go ahead and move to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three cards. Lonnie Wilk, Gary Batensky, and Josephine Gahn. If you would take the microphone and name an address for the record, please. Thank you.
I'm Lonnie Wilk from the Anti-Defamation League's Florida Region. Very difficult to get up and speak before you today in light of what has occurred. I also want to share with you a little bit of the data and information about what the state of affairs is for the local Jewish community. It's important to note that this incident, this horrific, vile incident in Israel, for the local Jewish community, we had a 40% rise in antisemitic incidents locally in the state of Florida in 2022. The number of antisemitic incidents as tracked by ADL doubled since 2020. We are at record levels of antisemitic incidents in the state of Florida and record levels of antisemitic incidents throughout the U.S. And in just the first few days after the horrific attack in Israel, ADL saw a 300% increase in antisemitic incidents across the U.S. We tracked more than 150 anti-Israel rallies across the country, including some that had horrific antisemitic rhetoric and imagery. And it should be noted that anti-Zionism and antisemitism conditions people to see Jews as subhuman. Just yesterday, just yesterday, the federal hate crime statistics were released, the worst year for hate crimes since tracking began in 1991. And antisemitic hate crimes throughout the country increased last year 37%. So when we look at what people can do, what can people do? Number one, we urge everyone to report any antisemitic or any bias-motivated incident to law enforcement when appropriate and to adl@adl.org/report. We urge everyone, every CEO in Palm Beach County, every business leader, every community leader, to express their solidarity with the Jewish community. Bias-motivated incidents, expressions of bigotry, expressions of hate usually target people not for being an individual, but for having intrinsic characteristics of a community. And so a bias-motivated incident is usually intended to spread messages of fear and intimidation throughout. So thank you to all of you for expressing your solidarity. Thank you to our members of law enforcement who are protecting the Jewish community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Weiss and County Commissioners. I'm Gary Batensky, a member of the American Jewish Committee, AJC Palm Beach Board. On behalf of AJC, thank you so much for this really important resolution. On October 7th, 2023, more Jews were murdered than on any single day since the Holocaust. It was a modern-day pogrom, but this time not in Eastern Europe or in Zarys, Russia, but in the ancestral homeland of the Jewish people, Israel. The rest is really commentary, but the commentary is important, indeed our obligation to bear witness. The more than 1,400 Jews brutally murdered, including 30 Americans, were women, children, grandmothers, infants, and even entire families. Those killed and kidnapped included Holocaust survivors and the disabled, over 190 hostages and more than 3,500 injured. The massacre, the slaughter, and the crimes against humanity must never be forgotten. Brutalized victims paraded in streets amid celebrations and video recordings by their murderers? Let us constantly remind the world that such evil must be defeated, that Hamas is a vicious terrorist organization funded by Iran and engaged in a religious genocidal campaign, not only against Israel, but against Jews everywhere. Following our own 9/11, no one supported Al Qaeda. When Paris was attacked, no one supported ISIS. Today, all people of decency must stand with Israel against the savagery of Hamas. You either stand with Israel, or you're on the same side as terrorists who butcher babies. Period, full stop. We have another pressing obligation. Let us stand together in solidarity with Israel in the challenging days ahead, and there will be many. Let's continue to remind the world that Israel must defend herself and eliminate the threats to its security. She must protect her citizens. Israel wants nothing more than peace, but she cannot allow her mothers and children to be slaughtered. Let us pray for the safety of all innocent lives, for the comfort of the mourners, for the healing of the wounded, and certainly for the safe return of the hostages. And above all, let's ensure that Israel knows how united we are in our support. And thank you, Palm Beach County. Thank you for standing united with the state of Israel.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Josephine Gahn. I'm the Executive Director of Community Affairs for the Jewish Federation of Palm Beach County. And I'd like to thank you, Mayor Weiss, and all the Commissioners for bringing this resolution forward. I'd also like to thank the sheriff's office for constantly and diligently keeping us safe as we try and live our lives. As has been said, 10 days ago, Hamas murdered, brutalized, raped, beheaded, and burnt 1,400 Jews. As was said, it was a pogrom, the most Jews killed on a single day since the Holocaust. 199 hostages have been taken and seized, many of the victims, and some of them who were murdered and wounded, American citizens. Hamas is a terrorist organization whose charter is to eliminate the state of Israel and kill Jews. That is their purpose. It cares not one whit about its people. We mourn all the deaths, but every death is now on 100% the responsibility of Hamas. I thank you for your moral clarity. I have been here before to thank you for your resolutions and ordinances around antisemitism. But make no mistake, the antisemitism we are seeing, we have seen in Palm Beach County with neo-Nazis and white supremacists, is the same antisemitism that motivates Hamas, Iran, Islamic Jihad, ISIS, and more. The same canards, the same imagery, the same cartoons that lead to the delegitimization of Israel and the dehumanization of Jews is only extended now to the Jewish state of Israel. It is the same hatred. Your public support, your moral clarity is deeply appreciated by the grieving Jewish community of Palm Beach County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the Mayor and the Vice Mayor and the entire board and staff for working on this resolution. I am heartbroken by the terrorism that occurred, that took place in Israel that resulted in over thousands of innocent people being killed. I stand 100% with Israel, and I stand in solidarity with Israel. And I want to thank Sheriff Rick Bradshaw, through Colonel Araho, to make sure that our residents in Palm Beach County are protected. We must do everything in our power to eliminate and eradicate antisemitism in Palm Beach County, in the state of Florida, United States, and throughout the world. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to read into the record comments from Commissioner Woodward, who is not able to be with us today. Dear Mayor Weiss and fellow Commissioners, please know that I support the resolution with the state of Israel condemning the October 7th, 2023 attacks. While I cannot be there in person to vote, I want to make it known that I am in favor of this motion and to also express my deepest condolences to the families of those who have lost their lives or have been tremendously affected by this assault. Thank you for bringing this important matter to our governing board. Please know that you have my support. And from my own reflection, there has been so much discourse in the United States about this, and a great deal of that is occurring on our college campuses. And I just want to remind everyone that free speech is not hate speech, and that's something that's occurring today. And I do stand in support of Israel, our local community, our local Jewish community. Being the daughter of a mom who was in a retention camp during the World War II, there is no place for this anywhere in the world, especially here, but anywhere in the world and anything we can do to protect a nation, not a terrorist movement, but a nation, we need to do that. So I stand with the nation of Israel. And Mayor, thank you very much for letting me speak.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for everyone who has come up to speak today. As a daughter of a World War II veteran and a wife of a Vietnam War veteran and a very lucky wife of Holocaust survivors, the Sacks family from Bad Hertzfeld, Germany, I'm acutely aware of the ravages of the Holocaust and war. I understand that in war, there are consequences of civilians losing their lives. But I have never seen in my lifetime or read in all the studies that I have from government that there was an attack, such as occurred on October 7th, targeting women, elderly, children, and infants, as we experienced last week. So I represent one of the largest populations, second to New York, of Holocaust survivors. And as I have spoken about it in the last couple of days, this horrific attack on civilians will be answered. It will be answered. But here in Palm Beach County, everyone must know that we stand against this type of tragedy, and we stand for the people of Israel, the Jewish community. At this moment, we are all Jews. We all protect and support our populations. And I really am very proud of our Mayor, Greg Weiss, Todd Bonlaren, and everyone else who participated in this proclamation, so that there should never be anyone who has any second guessing as to where this county stands and where we go from here. So this is our resolve. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and pass the gavel to you and ask to be recognized.
At this time as Vice Mayor, I recognize Mayor Greg Weiss.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank Todd and the rest of the staff for putting this resolution together and bringing this forward. I want to thank my colleagues. Appreciate both your personal support during these very difficult times and your willingness to allow this to be brought forward. So thank you for that. To the folks that came out and spoke in support of the resolution this morning, you represent a very large population of our community, and you all spoke beautifully in expressing our outrage, in expressing our concern, in expressing the need for Israel to take the steps that it needs to defend its people. These have been difficult days, a little over a week now, since this terrible event occurred. And to see the people of Israel, the suffering that has gone on there, it breaks my heart, and I know it breaks everybody's heart to see that. But to see the resilience... But to see the resilience of the people of Israel and the Jewish people and the people here in the United States and in Palm Beach County coming together to support Israel at its time of need, I want to thank our community. I want to thank the government of the United States and the state of Florida for their resolute support. I believe this resolution clarifies, and thank you, Vice Mayor, it clarifies very clearly where this county commission stands in this regard. My heart goes out to the people of Gaza that didn't do this but have now been pulled into this terrible conflict. There's a difference between Hamas and the peace-loving people that are Palestinian. And let's be clear, there's a big difference. You're talking about a terrorist organization versus the civilians who are just trying to go about their peaceful lives, the same as the Israelis that had brutally attacked by this terrorist organization. So with that, I'd like to ask that we approve this resolution in support of Israel, and we will continue to stand firm. Israel will, we've been through this for over 2,000 years, and Israel and the Jewish people will stand strong and will ultimately win this war. I have no doubt about it. So with that, my motion is to approve the resolution. Baxter, you need to call the vote. So Baxter?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Anybody opposed? See that the resolution passes unanimously, six to zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you all. Would anyone mind if we take a five-minute recess? I'd appreciate it. Thank you. So we are now back to 5A1. This is a facilities and development item. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
I know staff is here to do a presentation, and does anybody need a presentation on I just want to say to staff, thank you very much. This is what used to be Lazy Lagerhead. If, and I hope my board approves this today, would be Dune Dog Enterprises, which has been an operator in the north end of the county, very, very well-respected, very well-received. It is such a wonderful addition to this piece of land, but I do hope in the future that we can get through the whole process faster than a year, because I know this has been a process, and I've gotten a lot of, I love the keyboard warriors that are at home that write the nasty emails, but I do thank you all for bringing this to us today, and I do hope that our board approves this. And with that, I'll make the motion to approve a concessionaire lease agreement with Dune Dog Acquisitions of Florida.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Marino. We have a second by the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, this motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. We are now on to item 5B1. And this is a motion to receive and file the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA Climate Resilience Regional Challenge Letter of Intent to apply for a $2 million grant. Does anyone need a presentation on this? Okay. Go ahead.
At this time, Mayor, I'd like to move that we recommend this motion to receive and file for NOAA at this time.
Second. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Sacks, a second by Commissioner Marino, and just to note that these are grants to make a more resilient community, and we appreciate our Office of Resilience, who is leading the way for Palm Beach County. And so we want to thank you for your efforts, and I'm sure we wish you most success in receiving this grant and love to learn about the projects you're going to be implementing once you receive the funds. All right, with that, I don't see any other questions. All in favor, all opposed, that motion carries six to zero. All right. And now we're on to 5B2.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item 5B2A and B.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marino to approve item 5B2A and B. We have a second from Commissioner Barnett. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Moving along, you have a few items for us today. Item 5B3, this is a motion to receive and file a Resilient Florida Program Grant application.
Mayor, I'll just, oh.
Go ahead.
I'll just continue. I'd make a motion to receive and file item 5B3.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Marino, a second by Vice Mayor, and to receive and file this application. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries six to zero. And 5B4, another program grant. You guys have been busy writing grants.
Mayor, if I could, since this is in District 5, and it's very important about with regard to taking care of localized flooding, I would like to move that we approve 5B4 for this contract execution.
Okay, so this is a motion to receive and file a grant application, just to clarify. And on this particular one, there is a local match required, 50%. The others had all been no local match required. So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Sacks. We have a second by Commissioner Marino, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries six to zero. Moving on, item 5B5, Office of Resilience, this is a motion again to receive and file Resilient Florida Program Grant. This one also has a 50% match.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file a Resilient Florida Program Grant application.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barnett on item 5B5. We have a second by the Vice Mayor, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries six to zero. Good. And again, on item 5B6.
Mr. Mayor.
5B6, yep.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item 5B6 to receive and file. Anytime we can get a bridge done, you-hoo in my district, and this has a match requirement of at least 50%, totaling $4.7 million.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Marino and a second by the Vice Mayor, seeing no other discussion, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries six to zero. Thank you. And I think this is our last one, item 5B7.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to, at this time, move that we approve to receive and file the grant for District 4 on behalf of Commissioner Woodward for 5B7.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion by the Vice Mayor on 5B7. This also does have a match requirement totaling $3,540,000 for work potentially in District 4. A second by Commissioner Baxter, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries six to zero. Thank you. And moving on, we're now on to item 5C1, and this is, oh, sorry. My bad. Oh, we are now to board appointments.
Wow, this is an easy meeting.
Isn't that nice?
My bad. I had the wrong one. This is still on. We deleted 5E1.
Okay, so now, so I am.
A long one?
Well, you just wanted, your staff was like, what, you deleted our item? On the fly.
I felt the glares.
Good, well, all right. This is item 5C1 from Community Services, and there are four points to it, A, B, and C and D.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make the motion?
Does anyone require a presentation on this item? I don't see any, so go right ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 5C1, A, B, C, and D.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barnett, a second by Commissioner Marino, and this is to approve item 5C1, A, B, C, and D. This is some planning grant funding, I believe. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries six to zero. Very good. We just wanted to see you guys come up here, because see your smiling faces this morning. All right, now we are on to item 6, this is board appointments. There's something here.
Community Services? 6A says Community Services.
On the agenda, 6A on page 64.
It has Community Services, typo.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Commission District Appointments, and we'll start with Commissioner Barnett.
No appointments, thank you. But while we're on Community Services, which is not supposed to be there, I just wanted to recognize the newest member of our staff, Sasha Lopez, who came over from the Community Services Department, and it started last week. She's now in her second week with our office, and I wanted to thank you, James, for loaning her over to us.
Should I have her?
Commissioner Marino, you're recognized. No appointment?
You're done? Thank you. Yes, I do have one appointment. I would like to appoint Mr. Joseph Fisher to the Tourist Development Council. I'd like to say thank you to Roger Amadon, who was there for so long, who has, you know, he got an offer he couldn't refuse, so he left the county. He left the state. And Mr. Fisher is the general manager over at PGA National, so he brings a wealth of knowledge to him, and I think for Vice Mayor Sacks, I think he'll be a good appointment to the TDC.
Thank you. All right, we'll move over to Commissioner Bernard. Any board appointments today?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Baxter, any board appointments today?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint Richard Christmas to the Fire Rescue Advisory Board.
Okay, very good. Retired firefighter, excellent. All right, and then Vice Mayor Sacks, do you have any board appointments today?
I do, Mayor. I would like to appoint Joseph, who's known as Jody, Mendel, to the Library Advisory Board. And I just want everyone to know that Mr. Mendel has been a volunteer with the libraries, and so this is really a step in the right direction for him and also for our county. So thank you very much, Mr. Mendel.
Okay, thank you. All right. Staff comments. We'll start with the administration.
No comments.
No comments. County Attorney, no comments. Commissioner comments. Okay, we'll go ahead, and we'll start with Commissioner Baxter today.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start with thanking staff for helping me put on an amazing town hall last night. It went amazing. We had a great turnout. We wanted to discuss some of the potentially upcoming changes in my district, so I just want to thank them again. Also, I would like to get some clarification. Something had come up with a resident applying to become recognized as a minority and woman business enterprise, and during that process, they have been, in my personal opinion, put through the wringer. They have been told that they have to be, I guess, in the field working to own the business and to be recognized as a woman-owned business. So I'd like some clarification from staff about that, because I don't think whether it is an automotive shop or a landscaping shop or anything, you don't have to actually work in the field to be a woman and own the business. You can have employees. And the feedback that I received back was, in my personal opinion, not acceptable. You don't have to be in the field to own a business. And so I would like some clarification on this policy and to see if it is being interpreted correctly, or if there's something us as a board need to dig into a little more.
I wasn't, I'm not prepared to respond to that. However, I will immediately dig into it and bring it back to the board, whether it, I will come talk to you first, and then I will send something out in a memo form to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, any other comments?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items that I would like to do. The first is I'd like to request an off-site proclamation declaring October 16, 2023, as White Kane Safety Day.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, we have a second by Commissioner Marino, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries six to zero.
Yesterday, myself and the mayor, we attended the White Kane Safety Day event in Palm Springs, and so I know myself, I want to continue to collaborate with the Florida Outreach Center for the Blind in order for us to continue to bring awareness to safety for pedestrians, especially for residents who are blind. So that's the first item. The second item is tomorrow I will be with county staff hosting an informational meeting on the Australian Avenue Project. That's going to be at Gaines Park from 6 to 8. And as part of the meeting that we just approved, which is a Resilient Florida Program Grant Application to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for $4.8 million, and that's for this project, so it's perfect timing that we voted on this and we're having a town hall tomorrow. And the third item is I want to provide an update to the board on Transit Village. I believe that was like sometimes early March, this board gave me the opportunity to work with county staff to work on Transit Village to try to see how we can bridge the gap on some of the issues. And so I want to thank county administration, county administrator Baker, the FDO staff, Palm Tran, the county attorney's office, and the folks who represent Transit Village, who we've been working on numerous issues. And I believe that the last time that we had a meeting, there were, I believe, eight items that were still outstanding that needed to be addressed in order to be able to close Transit Village. After many months of meetings, we pretty much have closed all but basically one item that is left outstanding, which is the appraisal item for what the properties appraise based on the contract that we had signed for. There are two ways that we can go about this issue. We can go the route of litigation and where this project can go away, but I believe that we can still try to make this still work if I can continue to work with county staff, FDO, Palm Tran, the county attorney entrance. the county attorney, Transit Village, uh, to bring this item to a closing that, uh, that we, that is, that could be satisfied, that, that we can satisfy all parties. November twenty-first, I believe that's kind of like our organizational meeting. My goal is that I would like for us to, between now and November twenty-first, for me to continue to work with county staff, to work with Transit Village, to try to bring this issue to a closing. After the twenty-first of November, if we cannot, then I will step out from my role as leading the negotiations. And for whatever happens, happens. But that's kind of like an update, that I would love to continue to work on that. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody have any objections to Commissioner Bernard continuing his leadership? So on, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for what you've done and, um, and your leadership on this. I know, um, this is an important project, and so thank you so much. It's been, it's been a long time and, and a lot of complexities, and so we just want to all thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, um, let's see, Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to request an off-site approval for a proclamation honoring the Diamond's sixtieth anniversary of the Palm Beach County Women's Golf Association.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno. We have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. That motion carries six to zero.
And Mayor, I just want to say thank you for, uh, your work today. It's heartfelt. And I know that you have the support of everyone here at this board for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words. Commissioner Barnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank you for your leadership and the work that you've done in making this resolution happen today. I stand with you and my colleagues on this board, um, fully behind Israel and their right to defend themselves against this horrific attack, which, for which there is no excuse, and for which, um, one of the representatives who spoke here today recognized that, yes, there are innocent civilians on both sides being targeted and killed by this evil Hamas organization. And we, as a country, as a people, should stand behind the Israelis as they work to annihilate this enemy, uh, of not just Israel, but of freedom-loving people everywhere. And we should make sure the horrors that we see on TV and social media are not forgotten about, but are documented, so that in fifty years, people won't come around and try to claim it never happened, which is already happening, as it was already mentioned on college campuses and, um, other, other places. It's a tragedy upon tragedy. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And it was, uh, an honor to be with you at the Palm Beach synagogue last week, and you gave, uh, beautiful remarks. Really appreciate that. I also want to thank Todd and Regina again for the work that you've done in making this resolution, excuse me, this ordinance, amending the Criminal Justice Commission ordinance happen. It's long overdue, and I know you thank me all the time, but, um, you did all the work, and I'm happy to support you, whatever it is that needs to happen next. I believe there's one more hearing, and then it becomes law. Long overdue. To create, uh, a bigger voice for more people in our community who have not been represented on this board before, especially among Hispanics I represent in my district. I also want to mention that this weekend is the final weekend of Oktoberfest. I had a chance to go for the very first time myself on Lantana in my district. Thousands of people, I think, um, maybe four or five thousand people were there, and they allowed me to walk in the parade, and I did the ceremonial tapping of the keg. It was a lot of fun, and I hope to go back this weekend again, myself. They didn't have the corned beef or the, uh, um, the, um, the codfish that I was hoping for, but they had a lot of bratwurst, and I'm going to take advantage again. So I want to wish everyone auf eine friedliche Weisen. Been practicing my German as well as my Spanish. But happy Oktoberfest to all of you. Please come by the Oktoberfest hosted by the American German Club. Thank you very much, and have a nice rest of your week.
Thank you very much. We're going to go back to Commissioner Moreno.
Mayor, I apologize for forgetting something. I think it's the brain fog from COVID. But the, uh, last weekend, there was an event called Tacos and Treats at the John Prince Park, and it was, um, a private, not a private event. It was put on and, uh, but I do want to say that I had received comments about how clean the park was, how well the park looked, and that our staff who were there were constantly cleaning and making sure, sure the park was, uh, looking the best it can. So I just wanted to say a shout out to Parks, to Parks and Rec, because I know, again, you know, we get the, we get the keyboard warriors that tell us how bad we're doing. It's nice when we get somebody who actually tells us what we're doing well. So I just wanted to pass that on to Parks and Rec and staff to let them know that the event was, was well-received, and our staff did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, for October seventeenth, I'd like, which is today, I'd like to ask, uh, for a verbal approval for three off-site proclamations on behalf of our mayor. First is declaring October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, as Celebrating Survival Day. And I think I'll just go one, two, three, and ask for everybody to, uh, to approve. The second, on behalf of our mayor, is declaring November fifth, twenty twenty-three, as New Horizon Worship Center Day. And then going on to number three, declaring October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, as Clinics Can Help Day. So I could have, uh, everybody, uh, have it up.
We have a motion by.
We have a motion.
By the Vice Mayor. We have a second by Commissioner Baxter. All. The last one is.
I will repeat the last one, just for you, Commissioner Barnett. And that is declaring October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, as Clinics Can Help Day. I'm sure everybody approves of this.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, for doing, uh, for recognizing, uh, these very good, uh, issues. And, uh, I would also like to say that I attended a very large event by Valencia Bay with regard to, uh, construction on Lyons Road and all the other issues relating to our road construction off of four forty-one and Lyons Road, my favorite road. And I, I would like to invite everybody to a celebration once Lyons Road is completed successfully. But I want to thank our engineering staff for continuing to work diligently on this, and also for the public, for their patience in, uh, in making sure that our, our roads are safe and that we continue with, uh, the county being very aware of, uh, of new and new people moving in and our roads being able to keep up with the new population. Thank you, Mayor, for that.
Thank you very much. So, uh, just going back, I, you know, this is, um, today's been a, personally, for me, both, um, rewarding, uh, in the sense of, of the tremendous support from you all and our staff in regards to what has happened over in Israel. For me personally, and I, I, I try to separate my, my personal self from what I do as a representative of, of my constituents and the people of Palm Beach County. But in this case, this is personal for me. And it's, um, it, it's difficult knowing the suffering that has gone on and, and unfortunately is going to continue to go on. But I think, um, the community coming together as, as we are is, uh, is, I think speaks, speaks volumes. I also want to thank our community, the greater community. There's been a number of events throughout Palm Beach County in the support of the State of Israel. And, um, to see the folks from all different stripes coming together is, it, I, I think lets us know where, where our community stands. Our former colleague, Dave Kerner, um, who is now in charge of Florida Highway Patrol, is one of his agencies. I want to thank him personally. On Sat, on Sunday, we had a rally downtown. He had twelve of his troopers there, uh, to help with security, which I know, um, provided a sense of security to the people that were in the, in attendance. In addition, I want to thank the mayor of the city of West Palm Beach for allowing, um, this gathering and for, uh, the police from the city of West Palm Beach, who also were there, um, in visible force for their, uh, efforts in, in making sure people had an opportunity to express themselves, um, which our First Amendment allows, and having, uh, a public gathering. So thanks to, to all of those folks. As Commissioner, um, Bernard mentioned yesterday, he and I attended the White Kane Safety Day at the Florida, um, Lighthouse for the Blind facility over in Palm Springs. We, and we, as part of that, um, Safety Day is to go out and walk the streets with folks that are visually impaired. And so there was a group, I want to say probably about twenty folks, most of them, um, totally blind, uh, walking, uh, taking a, a brief walk. And I want to thank Palm Springs Police for accompanying us. But I think it really points to the, the challenges that people are, who are visually impaired face each and every day in the public sphere. Not knowing, you know, that there's a branch growing out of a bush as you're walking down the sidewalk that becomes something that could end, end up causing somebody to fall or walk into the, be, trip and, and go into the roadway. It's incredibly dangerous, things we take for granted as sighted individuals. And so I want to, I want to thank the Lighthouse for the Blind and in their efforts to help our visually impaired people have the best possible lives that they might have. But I also, um, a much better sense of the, some of the challenges that they face in, in our public realm. And, and so I want to thank our, our commission and our staff for everything that you do to provide mobility and safety to folks that are visually impaired and, and quite frankly, dealing with any disability. It's, uh, it's something we can all be very proud of, but know that there, there are plenty of challenges, um, for these, these folks. So, um, with that, I don't have any further comments. Commissioner Baxter, I see your light is lit. Would, uh, is there?
Sorry, Mayor. I was asking for clarification, and I appreciate Commissioner Bernard taking the lead on the Transit Village. But I wanted to clarify, will this come back to the board prior to the contract expiring? Is it on an agenda currently? No. Could, uh, without objection, I would like to get an update. Just put on an agenda, we don't have to take any action, but the option to, if we need to, prior to that?
I'm, I'm looking to Commissioner Bernard.
Yeah.
I guess I'll ask the county attorney. When, is there, is the contract supposed to expire as a specific timeframe?
Right now, uh, under the contract, the, um, Transit Village has sixty days to tell us whether or not they're going to pay the money that is to be returned to FTA or put into a federal project. So on October thirty-first, that will be that deadline.
So, uh, from Transit Village, if you're here, um, how can we, can we agree to, to toll that, to be able to, on the twenty-first of November, so that at least that gives us a timeframe? Can we do that?
It is up to the board, um, if they want to give them more time that you could toll the timeframe. We may have to do an amendment of the contract to do that, but I think it is up to the board's discretion.
So, uh.
Commissioner Moreno wanted to, I think she had some questions before we went to.
I was just going to say, if we're going to have discussion about Transit Village, I do have comments, so we need to figure out where we are today, what the contract says, and when the timelines are, because I have lots of questions.
Okay.
Mayor, may I?
Yes. Administrator Baker, you're recognized.
If it is the board's desire to extend, uh, that period of time, you give us direction to do so to the November twenty-first date, uh, we then bring back an amended agreement that, uh, we can do a receive and file and continue to work, uh, with Commissioner Bernard, TV and staff in order to try to get this resolved.
Okay.
If that's the board's desire.
Thank you. All right. Vice Mayor Sacks, you're recognized.
If we're going to vote on something, I, I don't have any information on it at this time. I feel very uncomfortable, um, voting on an issue that's not on the agenda and that has not been duly noticed. And, um, uh, and I, I just will not do it. I, I think that it is premature to vote on something. I have no information on it this time. It's not on the agenda, it's not been duly noticed. And I think that if we need to have it, uh, if we need to make a decision on something, then it needs to go through the practice of what we do so that we know exactly what we're voting on and give an opportunity for those parties to, uh, to, to give us a presentation. But at this, this moment, we're almost adjourned. And, uh, uh, but we, we, this is not, this is not procedure, and, uh, we do not need to, to proceed on any type of vote at this time without it being duly noticed and have, everybody have the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, what we could do is you could instruct staff not to terminate the contract without further approval from the board. And that way, even though the deadline comes, I don't believe it's an automatic deadline. So the board would still have to take action.
Okay. All right. Thank you, thank you for that advice. I'm, I'm going to just.
I didn't know that we had this, uh, this deadline, so I, so this is not something that I knew that was going to happen until the county attorney said that.
Okay. Appreciate that. All right. Commissioner Moreno, and then Commissioner Baxter.
Is there anything that's happening today, tomorrow, this week that would, that we need to be concerned with? I don't know how to ask that question. Is there, is there something, is there an expiration date today or anything like that? So could I have clarification?
There is no expiration. We are at a place where there's a disagreement on the money that needs to be, um, paid under the contract. We feel very strongly in our position, and, um, that's where we are. And according to the agreement, they have until October thirty-first to tell us whether they're going to pay or not. If they don't say they're going to pay the money, then we have the option to terminate the contract.
Okay, so then this, Mayor, may I continue?
Yeah, please.
So there's nothing happening today. There's no contract being signed today or acceptance or anything like that?
No.
Nothing today?
No, no.
No.
On Transit Village's behalf.
No, nothing's changing today.
Okay. And I'm, I'm asking this because I have my own opinions on Transit Village at this point in time, especially having to do with appraised values of land in downtown West Palm Beach. And, um, I would not be in favor of any decision that puts the county in a position where we are paying any money to FTA, especially when you consider that right now downtown, and you can pull this up from property appraisers' records, right now downtown, property is selling for roughly eight million dollars an acre downtown. So when we're talking about a nine million dol, a nine-acre parcel, that's a seventy-two-million-dollar piece of land right now. So my responsibility has always been my taxpayers, has always been the county taxpayers. We just did this great mileage rate reduction. I'm not going to ask our taxpayers to pay any money for this property. Is that clear?
That is crystal clear, and staff and the county attorney's office is not recommending any changes, nor could we do that without approval. nor could we do that without approval of the board. It would be a board decision and it's not something that we are recommending.
Okay. And considering this sounds like it's still moving, I will keep the rest of my comments for our next discussion on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you. And that's all I was saying is I just wanted it to come back before us. I didn't want to take any votes or any action, just making sure we get the option to take that vote before the expiration, which is why I asked if it was currently on an agenda and it's not.
It is not.
So do, so if, are we, what's the easier route then? Putting it on an agenda that is already scheduled or extending the expiration date?
I, I think the easiest thing is not to, is not to do anything. Is to, is to give direction, not to terminate the contract.
Okay. I support that.
Okay. All right. So with, okay. So I guess after hearing this, is there any objection to giving direction to not terminating the contract? Okay. So with that, we're, we're good. All right. We're all good with that. I don't think we, we need to hear from Transit Village at this time. Thank you for being here. All right. So with that, I think we have finally exhausted our agenda. And I want to, I want to again thank everybody. I want to thank staff, thank my colleagues and thank our community for allowing us to serve, serve you. With that, this meeting is adjourned.